We are good.
Okay, super. Good evening. This is the October 23, 2022, special meeting of the Planning and Zoning in Connecticut. This is a hybrid meeting. Lynn, would you kindly explain how you run the Zoom meeting, please?
Sure. Um, this is a, this is a public meeting. Um, it's a, it's a closed pub, uh, public meeting to discuss a closed public hearing item. Tonight, the commission will not be taking any public comment on this. With that in mind, members of the public watching this meeting on Zoom, please refrain from using the chat option. Also, if you're joining us via Zoom for this meeting and you are not a member of the commission, please turn off your video and mute yourself and remain that way. Lastly, commissioners and Pete, please correct me if I'm wrong. For this deliberation on this matter, you can use and make reference to any information, report, plan, testimony and/or data that's in the record. However, you can't conduct your own outside research for these deliberations.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Start with the roll call. John Goodwin, I'm here. Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire Tascornia, she is absent. Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Arthur Cassavan, he is absent. John Engel, he is absent. Chris Herring.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
Paul Connect.
Here.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, uh, well, first question for all the commissioners is, you know, as you know, in the agendas, deliberation, any possible action on closed public hearing item will be discussed on 751 Weed Street. And so I will be seating commissioners tonight for the duration of this decision-making process. Key thing to be aware of is by the time we get to a vote, all commissioners, and I will ask you to affirm this before we make a please make sure that you have viewed all tapes and/or attended the meetings. I will be seating uh, for Mr. Passavant, Mr. Bash, you are seated. And for Ms. Dascornia, Mr. Herring, you are seated. Okay. Um, I will not seat Mr. Angle. Uh, I mean, I will not seat someone for Mr. Angle as he will be, continue to be involved in the process and will attend future meetings. So item number one, deliberation, any possible action on closed public hearing item. Item number two, discussion consideration request Timothy Hollister, authorized. Partners Development Plan applicant in 751 Weed Street for an 830 G set aside development, 102 dwelling unit multifamily development located 751 Weed Street for zoning regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations dated June 16, 2007. To add section 5.11 transit oriented multifamily zone, item number two, upon application Timothy Hollister, Ankle Allen, authorized agent W partners as development plan applicant in some and 751 Street Weed Street LLC as owners for petition for change in zoning boundary for property currently in the one acre zone. Quest to change doesn't get property located 751 weed as TOMZ transit orient multi-family zone, item number four, discussion consideration, the request Timothy Hollister, authorized agent W partners as development applicant for development applicant in 751 Weed Street LLC as owners for an 830 G set aside site plan application for the property located at 751 Weed Street. Commissioners, uh, I'm going to, uh, start by having attorney Gelderman speak to us for a few minutes, but, but before I go there, now this we will, as I'm sure you all know, we will not be making a decision tonight. But I think a good objective for the evening is if we can potentially exit the evening with a sense of the commission as where we would like to go in terms of a decision. And then we'll discuss the additional work that'll have to be done once we get to that point. But attorney Gelderman, why don't you review some of the decision considerations that we have to be cognizant of?
Thank you, Chairman Goodwin. First of all, there are three separate matters that need to be decided. They, the site plan, the text change, the map change, they are each on their own individual 830 G application. So there will be three resolutions, each of those applications are subject to the same considerations, you know, as the site plan. So it, it text change in the matchup. So keep that in mind as you're, as you're going through the, the process. The statute provides that, that if the commission denies uh, an affordable housing application or approves an application with conditions that substantially adversely affects viability of the affordable housing application, then the person who brought the application is entitled to take an appeal. Uh, those appeals are treated differently by the court than most appeals from actions that you take typically. The commission makes a decision and appellant has the burden of proving that the decision was unreasonable or wrong and on whatever grounds they choose to, to make that argument. With respect to 830 G, the burden is on the commission. And, and basically it's got three things primarily that it has to do. The first thing is based on substantial evidence in the record, all these, everything you're doing here is based on substantial evidence in the record. And that the, and then it, and that it's supported by sufficient substantial evidence. You have to prove that based on that evidence, the decision you made is necessary to protect, and I'm reading from the statute, substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters which the commission may legally consider. That's the first thing you have to determine. And the second thing is that the public interest that you've identified clearly outweighed the need for affordable housing. And finally, you need to determine that such public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the housing development plan to the, to the plan that was submitted. So now this obviously only applies if there's a denial or an approval with conditions that the applicant feels makes the project. So if you deny the project, the reasons for denial have to be supported by substantial evidence. You need to identify a substantial public interest. And then you have to make a determination that protecting that public interest clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. Uh, and that there are no changes that can be made. So that's, and, and the same thing holds true if you approve it with conditions. So if you attach a condition to the approval, then each of those conditions needs to satisfy the same test. You need to, the condition has to be placed because you've identified a, you know, through substantial evidence, you've identified a public interest, you feel that the condition is necessary to protect that public interest and the condition is, is outweighs the need for affordable housing. And there's no other way to, to, to deal with it other than applying that condition to the approval. So it's, it's a tough burden. No question about that. Um, but that's the, that's where a court will look at this. This is, this is the Affordable Housing Appeals Act, basically. So this is what a court will this is the standard that a court will apply to any kind of an appeal that's taken from your decision if one is taken. So so in order to if you deny or approve with conditions, again, that's the only time this is going to apply. If you do that, uh, then the court is going to determine whether or not you've met that burden, properly assessed all those factors in your decision. Ira Bloom and I have done a few of these over the years and, um, you know, our experience is just is that it is a tough burden. We've, we've prevailed in a couple and not prevailed and probably more than a couple based on the court's interpretation of the statute and the burden that the commission has. So I'm not by any means trying to tell you what to do or not to do. That's, you don't understand that. That's not my job and, and nobody on the commission should say to me, um, what do you think? You think this is a substantial public interest? Not my call. That's a commission call. It's not a legal termination. It's, it's a factual determination for, for the commission to make. At the same token, whether it outweighs the need for affordable housing, again, your decision. So if there's an appeal from that decision, we will do our best to defend your decision. That's what we do in court and, and, but prior to that, our involvement really is just to try to help you understand what the law says with respect to affordable housing applications. Certainly not to step into your shoes and and make any, make any decisions, recommendations, or anything of that nature. So that means don't ask me any questions that, you know, lead to that because all I have to say, I can't answer that. You know, I don't want to make it seem like I'm necessarily evading a question, but it's important to understand that, that these things now are your decisions to make based on the evidence in the record that you have before you. So so what that also means is that before you make a decision, all of you need to be pretty familiar with the record, whatever. If you deny it, or if you put conditions on an approval or whatever you do, it needs to be supported by the record. And the record is all of the testimony and documentation that you received during the course of this hearing. So substantial evidence, by the way, is a, is a qualitative as opposed to quantitative analysis. You can have much more evidence on one side of the question than the other, but that doesn't mean that, that that's substantial evidence and that's not, the other side is not substantial evidence essentially means expert testimony. So boil down, that's really what it is. So to the extent you have expert testimony that is competing comes to opposite conclusions, one of your functions and jobs is to determine which expert you think is more credible, which expert you believe, which expert you decide to rely upon. There could be a opposing opinion, uh, but that's your call. That's a factual determination that the commission gets to make during the course of your deliberation. So so keep in mind, it's, doesn't matter how many experts are on one side. Just you guys make that decision like a jury would and believing a witness or not. So and I think that's about all I needed to say, unless anybody has any questions about this.
Can you, um, for our clarity, explain what other matters means to you when describing protecting the health, safety and other matters of the community?
Yeah, it's, that's, that's a good question because the history of affordable housing appeals has really kind of been limited to certain things. There is fire safety, traffic safety, environmental concerns. So most of the, if not all of the cases that have come down over the, I guess, 40 years since the, since the, or whatever was adopted, um, since the act was adopted, have dealt with those limited kind of things. The, what, the statute does say, and I know there was a statement in the record from attorney Green who mentioned there are other things that you can consider. If those things relate to public, you know, you're, you're dealing with, you know, interests and health, safety and other matters. But I would suggest that if the other matters don't involve some impact to health and safety, there haven't been any cases that I'm aware of that have gone there. Uh, that's not to say that.
So why would they include other matters? Why not just leave health and safety?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, they, I'm saying, Dan, what the history of
No, I know.
the decisions are.
I know. I'm just trying to.
So other matters which the commission may legally consider. That's, that's if someone can come up with a matter that, again, it would still have to outweigh the need for affordable house. So if there is a matter that is within your purview, you know, you have your eight dash two sets out the powers of the so if there's something in eight dash two within your police powers that are set forth in the statute and, and your regulations that is necessary to protect whatever that interest is, and it outweighs the need for affordable housing, and there's no way to, to fix that, then uh, that is what the statute says. So I'm not saying that that can't be accomplished, that that, there can't be other reasons that are because it does say other matters which the commission may legally consider. Just historically, there haven't been many other than, you know, safety and, and the environment. And I would say that environmental concerns are probably the most often used reason to sustain a denial. We've seen that more often than anything else. You, you also may have a question about public safe, uh, fire code versus operational issues. That issue has not been decided on a, on appellate court level yet. There have been some lower courts that have said that if an application complies with the code, end of story, you can't raise operational issues. Other cases have, other judges have said, uh, if the operational issues are, are significant enough to create a real safety issue, they can be used as, as a basis for denial or putting a condition on something. So that question is a little bit up in the air on a, on an appellate level, which is the level appellate court, Supreme Court are the courts that really establish the law. And even though, and, and by the way, the judge who was the, who was for years, the, the judge that on the, in the housing, in the affordable housing court has ruled both ways themselves. Uh, so anyway, it's, it's, so I, you know, I don't know the answer to that, but we may find out, we may not.
So when we're talking about substantial and trying to characterize what's substantial actually means substantial evidence. I imagine there's a kind of a ranking where anything that can be quantified objectively, I imagine is probably the most substantial. Anything that's more qualitative, I imagine is regarded as less substantial. But is there anything from case law? And you feel you can kind of derive an opinion on what would constitute substantial, what's substantial enough?
Well, another good question, but that really is, it's not so much whether it's quantitative or not, because opinions can be substantial evidence.
Okay.
But they should be supported. You know, they, if you get an opinion from an expert, again, you're determining how much credibility to give to that expert and, and whether or not you think their, your opinion is based on sufficient data or whatever it is, you get to make that determination. Because a court will look at that and might say, well, that opinion, even if it came from a licensed whatever isn't supported by any, anything that we can see. But again, you're, you're the fact finders. So you may find credible evidence and substantial evidence that that you've, that you think is correct, and it may not be as detailed as someone else's. It may not. So.
Okay.
Pete, um, not looking for an opinion because that's what you want to be away with, but maybe talk about case law or however you want to address it is. You know, is there any case law, I guess, to refer to, um, in the track record of outright denials of applications versus applications that have been conditioned?
Well, I can only speak of the ones I'm personally aware of or I've read about, which is most of them, I think. But usually typically the, it's, they, there are appeals from outright denials. Remember that 830 G has a process where an applicant can come back to the commission, Louis appealing. And sometimes that happens when there are conditions attached to an approval and the applicant says, well, look, those conditions I can't live with, but I can do this or this. And they come back with a modification which they can do under the, um, under the act. But where denials have been upheld, as I said, um, it's primarily based on environmental that I've seen. Now, I've also seen some dicta in some cases, again, that talk about fire safety on an operational level. In one case that we had in Westport, the judge, we denied that we, the Westport Planning and Zoning Commission denied an affordable housing development. And it was appealed and two reasons, one, it was near the Sogtuck River in Westport. So there was some issue about the impact on the river. And there were operational fire issues on that. The court spent most of its time talking about the environmental issues. Then in a footnote at the end of the case said, referenced the fire, the operational issues and also, and said effectively, those were valid concerns as well, but didn't necessarily base his opinion on that. So uh, another case in Easton had to do with the impact of the septic systems on groundwater. That was a, that was a a development that used septic systems. He doesn't have any sewers. So but the septic system, they had enough land to design the system, but there was an issue about its impact on groundwater. That was a valid basis for denial, or at least there. Um, it was denied. They came back with a smaller proposal. So you know, and by environmental, I would include, by the way, flooding and, you know, water drainage, those kinds of issues, because those have direct if, and I think they can have a direct impact on wetlands and others, and other things, um, that would be environmentally related. So.
Pete, I have a question back to the other items in section eight point two. I just looked it up while we were talking, um, density and height are things that were allowed to regulate in zoning under section eight point two. And from my education in planning school, the rationale behind that is that density and height can cause congestion in the streets, affect fire safety, affect adequate light and air, general health and welfare. So is that something that we can consider here?
Well, because eight dash thirty G supersedes regulations. Since an eight, that eight dash thirty G application does not have to comply with local regulations, eight dash two is enabling legislation. So if the commission has adopted regulations that take those considerations and made them part of your regulations, well, eight dash thirty G says that basically those regulations don't apply unless you can show a direct public health or safety relation, you know, concern with respect to that. So that's why, you know, it's difficult that, that those, those other matters which the commission may legally consider. Since the case law is clear that you can't consider your regulations. That's one of the things you can't consider. You can't make a determination on an eight thirty G application based on your own regulations. This is notwithstanding your regulations. So, um, and to the extent those things are coded, you know, they're, they're in your regulations as, as standards. You really cannot apply those.
But if I hear you correctly, to the extent that the density and height is affecting fire safety or flooding or other issues that we can consider.
Again, yes, if there's substantial evidence in the record that, that correlates that one to the other, then yes, it's not that you're saying that it's too high, just it's too tall. We don't like it. It's too tall. Our regulations only allow 40 foot buildings. This one 60 feet, whatever. We don't like that. That's not a valid reason. If the height of the building or the density has a direct bearing on some public safety, health consideration, that's different. But it's not because your regulations deal with density or height. It's because of some uh, public health or safety consideration that can, that, that specifically is triggered by that height or density. And again, remember, you have substantial evidence in the record to support that.
Thank you.
Asking asking from the architecture side, whether it be a conditional approval or denial or whatever it may be, are we allowed to, as part of A30G, are we allowed to weigh in on the design of the building? The, the look, the feel, the materials, all of that, not necessarily scale and density.
Right.
But whether it's a good looking building or a bad looking building?
The answer to that is no. In fact, you're not really permitted to do that under any circumstance in, in, in looking at a, um, if you're reviewing something on a, for a site plan, special permit aesthetics are typically not something the commission can regulate. A lot of times you work something out with an applicant. If you don't like the look and you kind of say, how about this, 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 and an applicant can agree to anything. But typically aesthetics are not something that, unless it's a village district, are not something that the commission has authority to regulate. And and in an eight thirty G context, if it's purely the look of the building, that would not be safety or welfare. That would just be a, an aesthetic. So the short answer on that is no, that would.
What if, taking other towns as examples, what if the town had an ARB, an architectural review board that regulated the entire town like Greenwich does?
Advisory, I think.
Advisory only.
Yeah, it's advisory only. ARBs typically are only advisory.
Okay.
Pete, can I ask about the, um, the idea that the health and safety outweigh the need for affordable housing? So that's an interesting balance because you, you don't know how much the need for affordable housing weighs. And so one of the thoughts I had was, you know, we have an application on Burris Avenue for the commission that includes affordable housing and creates affordable housing in a way that's less dangerous, less potentially, I shouldn't be judgmental about this, potentially less intensive and less dangerous, you know, to the health and safety of the town relative to another development. So when we say outweighs the need for affordable housing, one of the contexts in my mind is that you know, sure, if there were, if there are absolutely no other sites available, um, and no other developers willing to, to do this at scale at economy, but by having a, a development in use right now or development in process right now where they are able to achieve portable housing in a in a much more safe manner in terms of the ways located and the way the construction staging stage is, is that, does that help? Is that when you start about wave, like if you have a lot of housing coming online? Or is it just the depth of the weight of affordable housing is, you know, bottomless?
Well, no, it's not bottomless. If, if, you know, the more affordable housing that the town has, I, you know, since it, since you are weighing it, think of scales, you know, as you, as you have more affordable housing, the burden, the weighing process becomes a little bit less because you know, that's what you do. You weigh the, the impact against the need for affordable housing, but the need for affordable housing is, you're dealing with what it is today in New Canaan. You're looking at what the need for affordable housing is. And, you know, I don't know what the percentage is in New Canaan right now in terms of. And you know, I don't know what the percentage is in New Canaan right now in terms of housing units percent of, you know, the percent, it's probably in the record someplace. It's substantial. And the fact that there are other affordable housing projects in the pipeline or that have been approved wouldn't necessarily impact that that weighing process a lot very much because because first of all, they don't exist today. And second of all, the, you know, again, it it's a terminology is a little bit vague. And anytime you use a weighing process, it's not always easy to know. But I can say, for example, if a if a the number of units in an affordable housing development may affect how you weigh it against the impact on public safety or welfare. So you have a small six unit development with two affordable units, but it's right next to a wetland and it's got, you know, the potential, you could say, well, look, we're only getting two affordable units out of this. It's next to a wetland. We think that that, you know, there's quantitative evidence in the record that shows that this is going to have an impact on the wetlands. It's not worth two affordable units. So that's kind of a weighing process there. Again, it's it's you have to do the best you can to determine whether a concern that exists, whatever it is, outweighs the need for affordable housing. There's a given, it's a given that there's a need for affordable housing. So that you start with that as a given. Now, as we're under the, we're under the statute, we're under ten percent, we're under whatever we are, two percent, whatever it is in New Canaan.
So if you're less than ten percent.
The act, the act applies.
Then the need is established.
The need is established, but if you're at nine point eight percent, I would suggest the need is less than if you're at one percent. And so when you weigh those things, the the, you know, something that might not outweigh the need for affordable housing if you're at one percent might outweigh the need for affordable housing if you're at nine point eight percent. Depending on, you know, what that impact is.
Okay. And then continuing that logic, if the need is arguably deep, then if the unit proposed is two hundred units and sixty affordable, you know, a third is affordable. Then there's no difference if it's a two hundred unit proposal or a one hundred unit proposal or a three hundred unit proposal. Because in essence, the the need is so deep, there's no real intensity.
I probably in weighing it, not a whole lot of difference, given the same impact on health, whatever that might be. Obviously, sixty affordable units, it will help solve the problem more than thirty, but that probably that weighing is probably negligible. That difference is probably negligible. At at the level that that's whatever percentage and is right now, one point.
Two point nine.
What is it?
Two point nine.
Two point nine. Let's center my thought, but but again, it's probably at that level. I don't know how many units that would translate to, but probably wouldn't make much of a difference in a weighing.
The eight thirty G regulation, the the basis by which it determines the percentage of affordable housing is strictly based on per town, regardless of the size of the town and regardless of the 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 number of people that live in the town has nothing to do with any type of a a distance metric to the town.
You mean how big the town is? No, it's a percentage.
No, meaning, meaning it's it's strictly based on the footprint of the town and not taking into account anything about adjacencies of other towns and well, how much, how much their affordable housing stock contributes or could potentially contribute to this town.
Right.
The example I would use is Weston, Connecticut.
Right.
Purely residential, purely two and four acre zoning. There is no downtown. There's a school. There's no retail. There's a store. Now, are they, and I don't know the overall population of Weston, but are they required to satisfy that ten percent? And based on the footprint of their town?
Yes, based on the number of ten percent of the total number of housing in it. Now, the whole region might be a factor in determining the need for affordable housing.
Explain that.
Well, if hypothetical. New Canaan was a very small town and it was sandwiched in between two large cities that had fifty percent affordable, the need for affordable housing in New Canaan may be reduced.
So the fact that New Canaan abuts Norwalk and New Canaan abuts Stanford, both of which are have already substantially satisfied their affordable housing quota.
Right.
How does that play into the calculation for Nick Cannon?
It it's part of the weighing process, but it doesn't play into the calculation in terms of where where we are in terms of having to comply with the act. So, you know, it it's something you could consider, however, would be difficult to to. I mean, I don't know. Also, Dan, if there's anything in the record that maybe I don't know if there's anything in the record that talks about Stanford, Norwalk, affordable units there, things of that.
There is. Mr. Hollister submitted a chart based on my rec, my request.
Okay.
Identifying the stockpile of all Fairfield County or all Connecticut towns of equal size, and he included the cities in there. So both Stanford and Norwalk are well above their ten percent quota.
Right. And what was, well, I'll add to that. It was very interesting that in his closing remarks, attorney Hollister specifically said that this is a lot about the regional
Right.
affordable housing.
I I know, I know he did. He did say that. So I think that might enter into discussion about the need.
Yep.
It's also the need indicated. I mean, you know, that's how a court would probably look at it, but Dan, your your point is well taken.
Anybody else for Pete?
Okay. Yeah, as far as the testimony expert witnesses, can a commissioner be an expert witness?
Not unless he made his comments during the public hearing and gave all parties an opportunity to rebut question. Can't for the first time in a deliberation say, by the way, sentence they're in the hearing, but blah, 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 blah. You know, I have expertise and, you know, I'm an engineer and that's that's not appropriate. That's it would be appropriate if it was raised during the public hearing. If you wanted to identify yourself as as having some expertise and then giving any party the opportunity to question or rebut or do whatever, but as think about, you know, the fact that once the public hearings closed, that nobody could, nobody can rebut anything. So if if a commissioner who had expertise in something decided to talk to the commission about that, first of all, he probably unduly influenced the rest of the members, number one, but number two, there'd be no way to rebut that or challenge it or agree with it. So through the process, so it just like a judge would never should never enter evidence into a trial. It's the parties that do that and and not the judge. The judge sees what is in front of him and makes a decision based on that. It's not to say you cannot use your own personal knowledge of something, but but that relates more to not to expertise in in a in a matter that's relevant to the application, but in terms of your local knowledge of New Canaan and and, you know, you you could say, you know, I've lived here for forty years and I I know about that intersection. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. But in terms of providing what you'd characterize as expert testimony to the commission, that wouldn't be appropriate. Keep in mind, these deliberations are part of the record. You know, that when we submit the record to the court, it includes the transcript of not only the public hearing, but of what's going on here too.
But what what if that person with the relevant background engaged during the public hearing? Engaged with somebody on behalf of the applicant who was giving testimony?
Yeah, no, if it happens during the public hearing and then and then it, you know, you limit whatever offer to what was offered during the public hearing, that's fair. It's, but I have seen situations where people have sat on particularly wetland commissions and they had a background in soil science, you know, soil science. And through the whole public hearing, they were silent. They during the deliberation, all of a sudden they say, well, you know what, this, this, that's that's it's not fair. And and we have to conduct our hearings with fundamental fairness. That's what the phrase that the courts use. So.
But if it was a discussion point that was deliberated back and forth between applicant and commissioner, for example, during.
It's already part of the record.
Then it's fine.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, what if? And I'll use myself as person that made the comment and the discussion. I didn't identify myself as an expert and there was no rebuttal from the applicant or anybody else.
Well, you made the statement in the public.
Yes.
During the context of a public hearing. I mean, you made the statement, you could certainly stand by it. Again, you know, it's a little bit of a a judgment call where you have to be careful that you're not using your expertise outside of the public hearing to you know, to make a point that wasn't raised in the public hearing.
I had a question on the definition of term expert. So let's say you have some resident doesn't claim to be an expert and prevents presents information to this commission. And the commission in its wisdom thinks, well, that was a very persuasive argument. We thought that it's an excellent point. Can that be used as expert testimony or does it have to be from someone who's been licensed as an expert somewhere?
No, it could be used. It's in the record. The courts say that that substantial evidence is usually, always usually expert testimony. But if if someone has particular knowledge and they've talked to you and you find it persuasive, you know, what they're, what the what the decisions are really trying to do is to avoid a popularity contest where you've got, you know, forty people who walk up and say, this is terrible. This is bad. That's not really evidence that you would rely on. But if somebody has some specific knowledge, just because they don't have a PhD or something behind their name, doesn't mean or they happen to be a resident, doesn't mean you have to ignore it. It may not carry the same weight as somebody who does have those credentials, but it's it's part of the record.
So when we're talking about a health overall, has the case record only focused on physical health?
As opposed to, you mean, mental health?
Psychological distress, mental health, yeah.
I haven't seen any cases on on mental health. I've seen some mental health cases.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. Commissioners, thoughts?
John, are you now looking to have us as a commissioner express our sort of view of the entire record, how we see it and what may be important to us? What's good, what's bad?
That all that and what direction are you inclined to go?
Okay, well.
And you don't have to bundle it all and you know, you don't have to present your entire case. We can, we can discuss.
No, but I'm willing to, you know, share my my views and the way I look at you know, certain issues. I mean, there are a lot of issues and I certainly don't intend to address it.
Yep, go. Yeah, fire away.
But I think I'd like to start out by saying addressing eight thirty G and the need for affordable housing in New Canaan. It's been recognized and we know what the percentages are. We know that we were supposed to get ten percent. We're now at two point nine. So, okay, there's that need. I think that Dan has made an interesting and hopefully an important point that if an adjacent town to a rather small town like New Canaan already exceeds the ten percent, then perhaps the need for affordable housing in New Canaan is not quite so deep since those who need affordable housing, perhaps whether they're teachers or, you know, fire, police. They can live in an adjacent town and be readily available to their jobs. So I think that's can't be ignored. It's also true that New Canaan recognizes its need for affordable housing and I think has done a lot to state that we're making efforts in a number of places to improve affordable housing. I don't think that anyone can fairly state that New Canaan wants none of those people that need affordable housing. We don't want those kind of people in the Canada. It just simply isn't the case. And we've made, I think, great strides and there are continuing plans to always try to increase the affordable housing. With that said, the the issue that strikes me with respect to seven fifty one the condos has to do with traffic. There are a hundred and two condos proposed. I think it's fair to assume that every one of those condos that are occupied will have a car, a vehicle. Some will probably have two, maybe not so many. But if the condo is fully sold out, I think it's fair to say there's at least a hundred and two cars that are going to be related to that condo property. There will be some that have two, so it's more than a hundred and two. I don't know. Guess what it might be? The way it's now set up is the any vehicle leaving the condo property has to exit onto Weed Street. It's a one way exit because the drive onto Elm is a one way in. So you have a lot of potential vehicles that will be leaving the property to go presumably many of them into town for groceries, for drugstores, a post office, for clothing shopping. It's all in town. You come out onto Weed Street, you take a left. You cross the northbound traffic on Weed Street. I think the record will show that Weed Street is a pretty busy street. And the traffic tends to move fairly quickly. I've lived in New Canaan now for more than twenty five years. I'm on the west side of town, so if I need anything in town, which is frequent, I have to come into town. I come on Wahakme, south on Weed, turn left onto Elm. It's that intersection, Weed and Elm, which is a main intersection, a principal intersection in the town of New Canaan. And there certainly is traffic there. There's now a crosswalk that was built across Weed with right away for the pedestrian. A blinking light stoplight comes on, so the traffic has to stop and let the pedestrian cross. I think we've heard testimony from neighbors or others who tend to use Weed that that pedestrian walk has caused more congestion than had previously existed on Weed Street itself. I think we've heard some testimony that those who tried to cross. Those who try to cross on that pedestrian crosswalk have to be very careful. They can't just assume that the blinking light means everybody stops and they don't have to look and just walk across. They won't last long if they do that. Because the traffic tends to. Either not really see or not be used to the fact that there is a crosswalk and it tends to go. Suddenly it has to put on the brakes as they see somebody walk. That's what exists. It's a busy intersection. Now, if you add. Two hundred cars in the condo units. I mean, a hundred and. Plus. How often those cars may want to go into town? I don't know, you can make a guess. Uh probably a couple of times a week, if more, if they're driving to park. For transportation. Townage Hill Parking Lot, since it's hard to get passes now for the downtown. Then then that traffic, they're going to be leaving more frequently. As they leave, they have to go on to Weed Street. And going into town, they have to take a left. They have to cross over the northbound traffic lane. Which. In my opinion, is a potential problem right there. Then they're going to take a left onto Elm. The proposal has new stop signs. On Weed as you approach Elm. So I think that the congestion at that intersection. Is going to multiply. Uh I know that we've had experts talking about the traffic and and using. You know, studies and uh. The the books that have been written on traffic and how you determine traffic levels. But I think the real facts. As I have have has had are in the record and as I've expressed them. We know it's going to be a considerable increase in that traffic on Weed Street. And most of that, a lot of that traffic on Weed Street does turn on to Elm because that's where everything is in town. So I think congestion. In my opinion, is a significant potential problem. And congestion. Almost. I can't say by definition, but. Congestion creates. Safety issues. Because when you have congestion. People are trying to turn, trying to go ahead, trying to go straight. Take a left. They may be frustrated, that makes it worse. So I think that a significant congestion is in itself. A safety issue. Now, you add to that. Uh because of the the application. A new pedestrian crosswalk. On Elm. Right up near that same intersection of Weed and Elm. So now vehicles. On Weed, whether it's north or south. I'm I'm talking mostly that the increases or that a substantial increase is due to the. Traffic on Weed going south because of. The application. But there'll be traffic coming north. Uh on Weed, they'll want to turn. They'll have one pedestrian crosswalk on Weed. As soon as they turn, another pedestrian crosswalk. On Elm. And when you have pedestrians and traffic. You have safety issues. I think you cannot. Uh pretend they won't exist and that the stop signs and the lights will mean that everybody behaves and that. Pedestrians and the traffic will will never come together. It's a safety issue. And I think it's a big problem.
I'd like to add to that. Just. On the on the discussion of the congestion and the traffic, it seemed like. With the traffic studies that were presented by the applicant's. Consultants. Were were sort of asked to ignore common sense. Right? You just touched on it in terms of the density of the traffic and to believe that this many units. Are going to add only four to five. Vehicle trips in the peak hour of the morning or the afternoon, and I might have the number off by one or two, but that that was essentially what they were inferring. I think it's ludicrous. Uh given, given the reality of what we're dealing with uh in not only during peak hours of rush hour in the morning or the afternoon. But the manner in which people are working these days, this was brought up during our deliber- our discussions and during the public hearing. You're probably going to have a small minority or. Uh a a large minority or a small majority of the occupants of this uh complex working from home too. You're going to have many more traffic cycles and cars in and out during the day than what was presented by the applicant's consultant. In addition to the vehicle trips, the pedestrian issue, again, we're asked to ignore common sense. We had, we had an initial site plan from earlier in the summer, which had openings within the. Within the stone wall that's to be rebuilt or remained that would allow occupants of the building to be able to discharge from the site. Directly at the corner where the crosswalk is to be able to cross over and go into town. And now because of site drainage issues that the applicant had to address that were brought up by the town engineer. That's a solid wall all the way across. That's elevated. That's preventing anyone within the footprint of that building wherever they may discharge, whether it's the. Main quote-unquote main doors that face Weed Street. Or a side door, they have to walk all the way around the building down Elm Street. To the driveway entrance, then hook a U-turn and come all the way back to the corner. To be able to cross over the crosswalk to then walk back down Elm Street to go get their groceries at Ahkme. No offense, but I think that's BS. No one's going to do that. Human nature, they're going to have, there're going to be people darting across that road at the sh- the people are like water. They're going to find the shortest path to travel. And they're going to dart across at the at the driveway and of the occupants of that building that are going to want to go to Weed um. Irwin Park, they are not going to walk down to the corner of Weed and Elm and cross over and come all the way back. They're going to be darting across Weed Street in the middle of all that traffic that's either zooming down Weed Street or queuing up for the intersection. And getting to Irwin Park. That's just human nature, regardless of what international traffic studies and metrics and formulas say. We all have to be able to admit that. I think. I think it just. I don't think it's a. Given the density and the congestion that you noted that it's going to create, I think it's going to create substantial safety issues. At that corner. I was there today at four oh three. There was no school buses. It was not peak rush hour yet and I was on Weed Street, the eighth person back, sorry, on Elm Street, the eighth person back, I was next to the driveway entrance that exists now. Waiting to queue up to make that turn. And there were people behind me. And there were people on Weed Street waiting to make the turn because someone was on the crosswalk, waiting to make the left and um so someone's crossing the walk and that traffic couldn't go through. That's going to be compounded multiple times. If this additional density is allowed to exist on that corner.
One thing, uh just on those points, um it did not seem that the applicant ever addressed the issue of delivery vehicles. In this day of Amazon, we talked about that frequently and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they ever incorporated that.
Delivery vehicles will have to come out onto Weed Street.
Correct.
That can't go down to Elm.
Correct.
Right, and that was never in the analysis. Um no. A question for all you guys, where did we end up on level of service? Anybody?
By adding the stop signs, the level of according to the applicant's. Uh consultant and to our peer review, by adding the stop signs, the level of service got better. It went from a, I can't remember.
Was it an F?
Was it an F?
It was an F.
Went from an F.
To C, C or D?
C, I think.
C.
C, yeah.
So the stop signs. Helped the level of service. That doesn't address congestion and safety. That's just level of service. Even the applicant's own consultant stipulated that.
I think I think the difficulty, though, is going to be translating what um. Certainly is is likely to be um a heavier level of congestion. To a public safety issue. And did we have enough on the record that can kind of draw draw a really positive correlation or any type of causation from congestion? To a public safety issue that. If this goes to appeal, um. You know, one could say that that's substantial enough evidence that um. We can draw definitive public safety issues from congestion.
I think the way you have to look at it is. What if the design was different? Right? Do a clean slate. Take that building off that site, do a completely different, and I I don't know what that design is, I'm just suggesting site travel and traffic. If the the building design and the site design. Provided a solution where you would have multiple points of entry and multiple points of discharge from the site. So instead of one way in, one way out. Both of those were in and out. That would then alleviate the 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 load or the impact of traffic in a particular direction. Right now, you're asking everyone that lives in that facility, if they're going south or going into town or they're going east. They're coming out of Weed Street and heading right for that intersection. That now has three stop signs and that everyone's congregating it. You're creating a hornet's nest.
Yeah. So so just taking a step back in kind of the way I'm trying to frame this, at least initially, when considering. A denial versus uh a conditional approval, you know, something that we all have to consider along with some sure, you know, outright approval. The way I'm framing it in my mind is how much control the applicant has. Um or doesn't have. Over um some of the issues that can potentially contribute to public health or public safety. And um by that, I mean, um I think of infrastructure, town infrastructure, town operations. As being two factors that are really largely beyond reasonably beyond the applicant's control. And so if we find that their infrastructure or operational limitations or deficiencies that are beyond the applicant's reasonable control. Or his or her ability to remediate. Then I consider those factors in the bucket that could be justification if they have enough of a pronounced effect on public health and safety that would outweigh. Um the need for affordable housing. Those are contributing factors for an outright denial. The framework for a conditional approval. Would be that the factors that we are concerned about for public health or public safety can be remediated by. The applicant, can be reasonably remedied by the applicant. So then I go to, within that framework, what are some examples of potential operational or infrastructure issues that we've heard in the case record? That can contribute um meaningfully in my mind to. Public health or public safety issues. And the two that I've kind of really focused on, and I'm not going to go into the details here, I think that can be further fleshed out in this discussion. Are um one, um the NFPA Guidelines seventeen ten. You know, surrounding um the ability, and we've heard this from the chief as well, the New Canaan uh fire chief, the ability to conduct. Both rescue operations and fire suppression. For, you know, under um the guidance of NFPA Guidelines. And, you know, some will say, well, they're just guidelines, they're not mandates. Well, if the guidelines. Think what what matters from a common sense perspective is how far we were, we are removed from those guidelines. And in that case, we're extremely far removed from those guidelines. We have six onsite. Full-time firefighters on staff. You know, if we double the size of our force. It wouldn't even come close to the NFPA Guidelines. The other part about that, you know, guidelines and how relevant they are. Is would the implementation of the guideline cause any type of undue harm or in any way compromise an individual or a group of individuals? And I don't think that coming closer to NFPA Guidelines, which I think is especially important for developments like this, or Canaan Parish. Um would in any way kind of cause undue harm. To any individuals or group of individuals. So I I consider those kind of those guidelines important. Is there a way to remediate? Things? Well, you know, we discussed pretty extensively the idea of mutual aid. And the short answer is no, we're not going to come anywhere close to. You know, having twenty-eight personnel within eight minutes onsite, not even remotely close.
Correct.
The closest town was Norwalk and it was eleven minutes and that's not even, it's not even considering, you know, call time and other factors. So um. You know, kind of that's that's one um kind of conceptual real concern that I have that I believe is outside of the applicant's control. The other is concerning um. Our wastewater treatment plant in the instances that we've had in the recent past in two thousand and one, two such instances. Where we've gone beyond our physical capacity. Within that wastewater treatment plant by over thirty percent. Yeah, so we had seven million um gallons of discharge coming into the plant and we have design capacity of four and a half million. The pushback on that is, well, that just happened twice. And I would say, you know, overall, we are seeing more um short-duration, high-intensity storms. Those were two two-hundred-year storms that happened in two thousand and twenty-one. The chances of that happening are one in forty thousand. It could happen, or a more reasonable explanation could be because of, you know, climate change. Um we're more likely to get, we are seeing more and are likely to continue to see more. Um short-duration, high-intensity storms and do we have the infrastructure to be able to satisfy? What has become a more frequent um occasion? And um it gets into a little bit of detail in terms of, you know, the amount of capacity we have, but the bottom line is. We didn't have enough capacity without taking, without Jim Rogers, the superintendent of that facility, taking some extraordinary measures. To um if he hadn't taken those measures, we would have had effluent stormwater discharge. That would have in all likelihood been dumped into the Five Mile River and that becomes an environmental concern and frankly, a Long Island Sound concern, which this. Commission is charged under Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. To take reasonable steps to protect the environmental um health of the sound. So those are two instances where we didn't. We didn't have enough infrastructure. We didn't have enough capacity if those kind of extraordinary measures weren't taken. And so I'm not looking at this in terms of, do we have enough um. Infrastructure for an average dry day. The right way to think about this is. On those days that are well above average, peak days, what what could happen? What would likely happen again? And the reason why we contracted with ACOM is to try to close that gap. Between those extremely kind of wet days where you could get seven million gallons or more conceivably. Um of gallons going into the wastewater treatment facility. Versus what we're able to handle without, you know, taking extraordinary steps of four and a half million. Can the applicant take any reasonable steps to remediate that? No. Does eight thirty G or my limited knowledge of case law mandate or require us to hire additional fire personnel in-house? Or to hot or to build out our wastewater treatment plant capacity? No. It doesn't. It doesn't even go so far as my understanding to say that when our fire chief says that we don't have any ladders that can go up to the fifth floor of this building. That since we only have a ladder that can go up four floors, that it's mandated upon us to incur the cost to to get that ladder. So I, there there are things here that um. Are are, you know, those two areas that are definitely concerning me. One last point I wanted to make. Is that some of the pushback, and this is understandable pushback, would be, look, this application is only adding around twenty-four thousand gallons a day. Of discharge um into uh that that wastewater treatment facility. It's point three percent of our overall or something capacity. And I think that's the wrong way to look at it. I don't think we should be looking at it in terms of, well, this is. You know, just marginal um at best in terms of its overall impact. The right way to plan in my mind, from an infrastructure point of view. Is how do you kind of manage risk? And if you already have a strained system. Any one of these applications that are adding a lot more discharge into this to the system are inherently higher risk. And we should be thinking about things in terms of probabilities of risk, because if we do have an environmental issue, we will never be able to isolate. What application, what house, what neighborhood? You know, what section of town caused that, right? It's just not the right way to think about it. At that point, it doesn't matter. We're not going to say that this application was the straw that broke the camel's back. So we shouldn't be thinking in terms of marginal impact. We should be thinking about in the context of the full picture of the. We should be thinking about in the context of the full picture of the entire system that we have a strained system right now. And this is a higher probability risk application in that regard.
To your point, I think a good way to look at it is the existing system when it comes to storm sewer. Yes, it might be satisfactory and there's additional capacity there. But we should just consider that the safety factor, just like you do when you engineer a building or you design something else. There's a safety factor of capacity in there. If we, if we, to your point, if we were. Right at the threshold of a catastrophic failure of our storm water, uh, storm water treatment plant. That safety factor, we've we've pushed right to the line of that safety factor. And any significant increase to that stormwater capacity is going to put us over the threshold of the safety factor.
I had a question on the sanitary sewer. Now, if memory serves, the connection to the sanitary sewer and eventually it flows into the wastewater treatment plant in our town. Is through an easement to a neighbor who is on the. Formerly on the sanitary sewer system. And the also if I recollect correctly, the applicant said that the connection is a two inch pipe is perfectly adequate. And. I got the sense that it was maybe awkward but adequate, sort of like. Not having a refrigerator in your kitchen, it's in the garage and you have to keep going to the garage to get the milk. Okay, it's awkward, but it works. Okay, it works fine. But then there's a lawsuit regarding that in order to try to attach it to the formerly to the. Town sewer system, adding a manhole and so forth. So I I'm just wondering. If if it's adequate, what's the point? Is this in effect a statement that perhaps the sanitary sewer is not adequate to handle? This particular development. Because adequate, what's what's the point of suing? I mean, it's it's okay, okay, it's awkward. You gotta go in the garage to get your milk, but you know, it works. Okay, no problem. So, I mean, trouble with sanitary sewers strikes me as a pretty big deal. Certainly is a health and safety issue. And so even by the applicant's own statements, I just get a sense that perhaps. Something doesn't quite add up and it's just been rattling my mind for a while. So I just want to put that in the record if I may.
I I can add some color to that, why? I don't believe the applicant's statement that is adequate. And all you have to do is look at the applicant's documentation and their civil civil drawings and sanitary piping drawings that they've submitted. The connection from the proposed complex out to weed street, the new connection to the extension, right? Which is an appeal is an eight inch pipe. From the existing site out to the new manhole. But yet the. Proposed new manhole to the proposed new extension.
Yes, sir.
But the existing sanitary line that runs from that site through the easement out to weed street through other properties is a four inch pipe. It don't fit.
Well, a four inch pipe for a single family house, I can. I can wrap my mind around that one. And but for over a hundred units with no doubt, public toilets and so forth and washing machines and all the rest that goes with that. That's that's a different situation, at least in my own mind. And so when I think of. Sir, your comments about health and safety. A sanitary sewer problem would strike me as relatively easily qualifying as health and safety issue, at least in my own mind. And so, given the statements that have been put in the record, it just kind of never set well with me. And so I just wanted to mention it here for consideration by my fellow commissioners. So that's my statement. Thank you.
Okay, so here are my thoughts and I think they echo a lot of what we've already heard, but what I'm hearing from the other commissioners is that this. Project as it's currently proposed puts. An enormous strain on some already strained infrastructure that we have, whether it's stormwater, whether it's sewer, whether it's traffic. Or whether it's a fire department with six full-time employees. And I think the lowest common denominator behind that, what's driving this strain is. The site plan and the density on the site. So the site plan, in my opinion, is overcrowded. It has too many things that it's trying to accomplish in a finite space and therefore. As a result, it sacrifices some of these other things that we've discussed specifically fire safety and stormwater. I think that as Mr. Bash already pointed out, the density of the site plan puts a strain on the already challenged fire department to respond in a timely manner. And it also is because it's somewhat of a congested site plan restricts operational access to the site for the fire department. Which is a concern, specifically the parking court in front of the building where they're storing the snow in the winter. Where the garbage is going to be picked up. And then the density secondarily is also driving the impervious surface coverage on this site. So because. As Dick pointed out, there's a hundred and two units, there's X number of cars, there's what a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty parking spaces. Basically, this whole site is built out. It far exceeds coverage of anything else we've ever seen or allowed to be built in the town. And there's a reason for that. I mean, there's a very good planning reason why you don't just build a hundred percent site coverage on a site. Because you have to have some impervious surface for stormwater drainage. You have to have some open space or recreational space for your residents to play. You have to protect adjacent neighbors from noise, air and light pollution with adequate buffering. And when you put. Too many units that need too much parking on too small of a site, you can't fit all of those things. And that's what I see happening here. And so as a result, this project, like I said at the beginning, is going to kind of. Offput its externalities onto the surrounding environment. It's not able to manage it all on their site because. They've taken it up with the units. So, you know, I think from both a fire safety perspective. And stormwater perspective, if the density on the site came down. That you might be able to accommodate some of those things in a safer manner.
Well, I also think, look, I think we all agree that the site is just way too dense. And I think what we're also agreeing is the density of the site leads into significant risks to safety. And health. And I I found it interesting is. Krista, you asked, I think James, you asked a couple of different questions. We asked the applicant, could they do a whole bunch of other things? And the answer was consistently, no, we can't do anything on landscaping. We can't do anything on open space. Can't remember the other questions that we asked, but it was no, no, no. Part of my mind says to me because they're trying to figure out how they make money on this thing.
If I could just interrupt one second. This is from the applicant's submission of September twenty third, the book that they recently gave us. It was. Rebuttal statements by Mr. Hollister to various comments we had made over the few meetings and things that were brought up by the consultants. I think. Chris, this was one you brought up, was the design team given specific parameters? And the answer is, they were told to calculate the layout, the maximum residential density that would be consistent. With the subject property, external infrastructure and abutting neighbor issues and would provide a residential living amenity that would be. Make the finished development financially feasible, safe and desirable place to live. Basically, max it out to the best dollar return.
I remember asking about my usual questions on landscaping where it's four, four feet maximum as a border and it's not much you can fit on four feet. In fact, it's so small that they have to rely on neighbors' trees. So is this, I remember posing the question, were you, you, did you suggest we need this much space for proper borders and it was. Never really answered, but the the impression I got was that they put as much. Hard service in as possible, whatever's left over is greenbelt. Which is how they backed into it as opposed to started with, you know, what sort of greenbelt do we need to have an appropriate border? It's the borders, whatever's left. And I think it speaks to these issues.
Well, and I'll say, I mean, I think everyone on this commission knows I'm a big proponent of affordable housing and have worked hard and will continue to work hard to help. The town meet its goals in that realm. I'm not sure that. Building a project of this size with this many people squeezed into the space with no open space with limited landscaping with difficulty. Accessing the sidewalks and the crosswalks and whatever, but that's. I mean, that's that's a good environment for anybody, especially, you know, residents that we're trying to entice to live here in affordable units. I I think. We should try and do better than that for everybody.
And I'd I'd add on on the density, the the architect. And and again, the the issue here is a lot of this does go to, if you've got too much on the site. We do have significant risks to health, safety and welfare. The architect gave us, it was it was funny and and one of the neighbors, Mrs. Moore pointed this out. I asked the question early on. And the process and in the submission, they gave us pictures of affordable housing. And those pictures look great. They had, they had open space, they were separated from each other. And then the architect came in front of us and the architect is out of Washington DC. And the architect talked about Alexandria, Virginia. Alexandria, Virginia is a city. Talked about Georgetown, Georgetown's a city. So the architect's perspective was designing a building that would fit into a city. New Canaan is not a city. And, you know, so you can argue, well, hey, you're talking about aesthetics. I'm not talking about aesthetics. I mean, I am talking about aesthetics, that's part of the problem, but I'm also talking about. A design that potentially if it's in a city, it does have the infrastructure, for example, fire. To deal with a situation that happens there. So.
I'd like to follow on what our chairman just mentioned. New Canaan is, the historic character of New Canaan is based on the relationship between. The the house and the land. There are several examples of. This, this relationship that is sacred, this site is is a. A view corridor is a very important site as far as entering downtown. Heading over to be part or to to the urban park. And a structure of this density, the the bulk, the height, just. The appearance of it is going to have a huge impact on the psychology of. An individual that is experiencing new Canaan. And I would go go further and say that. In the park, the Gores Pavilion is there, it exists. It has that same simpatico relationship between the land and the structure. There's a balance between nature and man-made objects. This new structure will destroy that historical character. And I say that it's a. Beginning of a threat of our modern houses, structures in New Canaan. And I think that it's it's just out of character and it's not in harmony and. It has a psychological impact on citizens and visitors to New Canaan.
I think there's also something to be said about the, the. The impact, the well-being, the peaceful enjoyment of the already existing abutting neighbors. The ones directly to the east, the four properties on that property line, the neighbor to the north. The current site plan completely ignores any type of attempt at screening. Or buffering or visual or acoustic or whatever it may be. I mean, you brought up the four foot planting band. The only thing that's going to grow in four feet are pachycephalos. And we're talking and the applicant themselves are proposing five to seven foot evergreens that may grow to about nine feet. On a property line to shield a fifty five foot tall building or whatever the dimension is, five stories high. To a, an existing resident. Whose existing buffer that's there of mature trees is being slashed in half. So they're removing half of that buffer of mature trees and planting that already create a separation between properties. And replacing it with five foot trees. It just, it's a very poor attempt at, at maintaining that type of peaceful. Relationship with a neighbor in a neighborhood.
I'm just thinking about this as far as. Assuming the commission in its wisdom decides to deny the application. So I'm not saying I haven't decided anything, but let's just take this for instance. Is what arguments are going to be the strongest in demonstrating health, safety and others? Something that really is a clear and present danger that is really hard to argue against. A problem sewage system would probably qualify, in my opinion. I mean, the two words you never want to hear is septic problem, right? Have septic system, those are, you don't want those in the same sentence, okay? If you ever had a septic problem, you realize that's really expensive and unpleasant. So there's that, there's also flood and drainage. One of the points that was brought up during the hearings was water flowing down. Into we into Elm Street, which is on a hill. It ices up, it was mentioned by, I think, one of the fire people, ices up and suddenly you are skidding and gravity is not working with you. And it's working against you. There are people crossing the road to go to their houses, to go into businesses. And, you know, I think we've all been on our roads, especially the hills. On icy days and skidding around and you hope you don't do a three sixty. That would seem to be certainly a life, health, safety issue that's pretty hard to. That's that's a strong health and safety issue. And so. Those types of matters, I think, would be particularly persuasive. And also clearly show that health and safety are risks from this project. And risks that this commission may not want to entertain or entertain. And so, again, flood, drainage, ice, fire. As well as sewage, black water. Are big deals that I, and I think most any. One hearing that would say, yeah, that's that's pretty substantive. That's that's a that's a worry.
Oh, we've, we've talked a good deal about fire, but but, you know, we need to go back into the record. But, you know, my my takeaway was between Mr. Kingsbury and Chief Basset. Where I did not see all of the issues that have been brought up by the end of the hearing and resolved was concerns on both of their parts. So that that's one area as I went through my notes and wanted to confirm in the record.
I could, I could just build on that. I mean, I was looking back at Andrew Kingsbury's review and. One of the things that continually bothers me about this project is just the lack of specificity on the plans. It seems like there's a. A large building, but not a lot of detail as to, you know, how the units will be broken up, where. Where there's flexibility in the in the stairways and and a good example is here where he points out that. The canopies that are in the central center of the U were problematic for ladders. And the applicant responds that we're gonna, we're gonna move them back a little. But without really specifying exactly how much they're going to move back and what outcome that has. You know, likewise, you know, when we when we look at like the parking and the coverage, it seems to just. Maximize things. I think Christie mentioned in one of your letters, the idea that the one point five ratio parked to units and and they're at. Which I think gives approximately a hundred and fifty spots and they're at one hundred and seventy eight. So they're adding. Additional coverage, which arguably adds to the the flood effects that could impact. You know, with the stormwater, but also the wetlands that are across the street. It's just a highly intensive and. Just doesn't come across as a very conscientious development in that way. Like it seems like what other things have been missed? In terms of, you know, the heights of the buildings, the heights of the locations of the stairway. It just doesn't come across as someone as a building that's been designed. To have a user experience that it's either going to be, you know. Pleasant or or safe. And the other thing I'll say is that. I think that the zoning requested is is quite punitive to the circuit, the property. is, is quite punitive to the circuit, the, the properties around it and that it's asking for a spot zone. Uh, you know, between three acres and five acres um for properties in there without really allowing for the corridor of properties that connect it to the train station to also be um, you know, transit oriented. So arguably you know, if we were to position a project like this, I'd want to, you know, talking about building on your neighbor's property, like I'd want to make sure that the properties around them, you know, have similar densities. And so that this five-story building can have a five-story building next to it. And that, you know, if, and you know, so it's not just so favorable to the individual property. Because it, it just doesn't seem fair in, in so many words.
But then the question becomes, where do you stop? So if I'm the next neighbor.
Well, so my, I mean, number one, we all know that Krista does not like site-specific zoning. Number two, my thought is that if this project were to get built, that the town should engage in a planning process to re-envision that end of, of Elm Street because frankly, it's not supported in our P O C D. You know, Elm Street and Weed was considered to be one acre zoning and that's what it was going to be for the, for the future. So if this project happens and that substantially changes, then I think it's incumbent upon the town to re-envision that. And as part of that, maybe proactively re-zone um neighboring properties to be something consistent with the new vision because you've had a massive change. If this gets built in, in what was and what is going to be. So in terms of the question of where do you stop, I don't know right now, but I would hope that we would spend some time thinking about that because it will definitely change, you know, a very important gateway to our town and we need to you know, sit down and think about what we do now.
But, but doesn't that also highlight the traffic issues, the density? You know, how do you solve that problem when it exists or will exist?
And how do you pay for the solution?
Yeah, it's uh
Right. When you're dealing with, when you're dealing with this type of density and the potential of future similar dense, dense projects. All of the town infrastructure, not just the storm sewer plant and the sanitary sewer, but our school systems, our roads, our fire department, every, every aspect of the town is going to increase in skies, in size and cost.
Particularly when I believe we still have in-town opportunities.
Oh, yeah.
And Vertus is an example.
Yeah.
Grove.
Yep.
There are a lot of buildings. I mean, look at those. Building and the other buildings near there.
We specifically rezoned a few years ago to promote this type of the development in that area.
We had a plan.
Right. But yeah, I mean, someone I think, I think mentioned the lumberyard. I mean, look, this is a little bit away from this discussion, but I think there has to be this kind of back and forth dialogue between us or a new commission, Affordable Housing Commission and the community about where some acceptable quote-unquote locations could be relative, relative to just sticking it into a residential, residential neighborhood where it's totally out of sync with the rest of the neighborhood. You know, just in going back to that idea of where that could be, you know, in thinking about the overall question of density and where you know, I'd say I understand why, I think we all do, obviously, why this why this application was designed the way it was. You know, the fact that we were kind of maximizing um this space available. Well, when you're renting out um, you know, thirty apartments out of a hundred for twelve hundred dollars to eighteen hundred dollars and your unit costs are over a half a million dollars and you have to keep it at that kind of regulated rate over forty years. Yeah, I mean, the economics change a lot in terms of what you have to do, the amount of density that you have to put on that site to make it even feasible for a developer. Right? And I do think, and I do want to kind of give some, some credit to the applicant for making, I think, some positive steps with, for example, I think on the traffic issue. I think that evolved and became better over the course of time. And I do understand why there is so much density on the site, just for the pure economics of it. I understand why you have impervious coverage of sixty-five percent. Unfortunately, as we're all saying, that leads to a host of other issues. Right? And where do you find that balance? On the one hand, yes, we do have this need for, I'll call it more workforce housing, affordable housing. But where, you know, and um I feel better about a denial if I felt there was like this something that was um more obvious and I think would be acceptable to the vast majority of residents about where that could be. And I just hope people have the understanding of wherever that is likely to next be because we will be working towards our next moratorium, that there's going to be puts and takes with that as well. There's nothing remotely like a perfect solution. And this discussion.
But I still feel that you can find a better footprint.
I agree. I agree with it.
You know, listening, one question I'm asking myself is safety than neighbors. Well, during the construction process and on a run-rate basis and, and that's a risk.
Yes.
I think the construction.
Sorry, Chris.
I was just saying the construction process is one that really like befuddles me. I, I don't feel like there's been any discussion really of the construction staging. I mean.
Well, to, to your point, sorry to interrupt. So we, we did ask about a construction plant and we were pretty much blown off. Um, the answer was, well, you know, we'll come up with one. And historically for major projects, for example, the library, we have required construction plans.
Yep, and the view.
And you could make the argument that, you know, if we can't review and approve a construction plan, you know, what risks are we signing on for?
And what safety issues are we compromising?
Correct.
When I thought that was a poignant point by, it was at Liz Moore, one of the neighbors, you know, her kids playing in the backyard next to her four-foot planting strip of grasses and cars going in and out of this, you know, a hundred and eighty, seventy-eight cars going in and out of this complex four feet away, like that would be a huge concern for me if I live next door and have little kids.
So commissioners, I, I, I mean, what I'm hearing is not approval. Um, state the obvious. Um, so then the question becomes, is it, is it a denial? And do you feel the case can be made for denial if you think it should be a denial? Or is it an approval with conditions? And as Attorney Gelderman has said, in both cases, um, we, I, in either case, both cases, we would have to make the case on, you know, health, safety, welfare and other relevant matters. I mean, any thoughts on that?
I, I think it's just worth noting that the applicant, and we already discussed it, that the applicant has already stated they're not open to compromises. Right? They're not willing to reduce the scale of the building to change any of the layout. Um, they did accommodate the traffic pattern or changed it to satisfy some of the uh initial comments. But they've stated they want to build as big and as much as they can. So because of that, I don't think there will be a solution that will resolve all of our concerns. Unless they're willing to change the building significantly.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I agree. I don't think that we can come up with conditions that will ever satisfy the uh the applicant.
Well, since the sewer issue becomes a pass fail.
Yeah.
Frankly, you know, let's say they cut the building in half, so it's fifty units round numbers. Fifty's still a lot in the small pipe. And uh, since the pipe was designed originally for a single-family house, which is a limited number of toilets and washing machines and dishwashers and all the rest. Even fifty might very well be more than it could handle. And so I, I think that, that the sewer issue is uh, is one we may really wish to consider. Uh, because that, you know, clearly is a, I mean, a failing, failing sewer is a clear sanitary sewer is a clear threat to health and safety. In, in my opinion. Uh, as well as the fire issues and so forth. Um, I think generate a lot of traction. And some of the drainage issues and flooding and what called health and safety of the neighbors too, which have been mentioned by other people. I think are important arguments we may wish to seriously consider in our final deliberation.
I think the, the fire issue, just to touch on that again for a second. There was a, the, a rebuttal by the applicant in the September twenty-third package. Contesting our, or our consultant's criticism of the access to the site and the apparatus required. And why that was never a concern at Canaan Parish. And I think it, for the record, we need to be clear that Canaan Parish and our fire marshal did say this is a completely different animal. Those, there's multiple buildings that have full perimeter access around them. You can drive the truck up to them. And because of that, Canaan Parish can be serviced by the apparatus that our town currently owns, meaning the fire trucks. They can reach simply because of the scale, height, distance. Uh, inability of, of, of reach for this particular building. We now have to depend on a larger apparatus that only one town in the local area has, and that's Westport. So now our chain of, chain of calls to call for support to respond to a fire event in a building of this size requires a fire truck from Westport that would take at least fifteen according, and we all know how far Westport Fire Department is on Post Road in the middle of Westport. If someone's going to tell me that fire truck's going to be in fifteen minutes, good luck. But apparently it can be here in fifteen minutes, but that's still double the amount of time then is recommended by the NFPA to respond to this type of a fire. So now we, we aren't able to internally address an issue like we are at Canaan Parish. We're depending on that adjacent towns and adjacent apparatus to get here in time to help service or deal with a fire at this location. I think that's a serious concern.
Well, it's not just the apparatus, it's, it's also the fireman.
It's the fireman as well. Yeah. But, but I'm saying the, the fireman issue. There's a reason that all our towns have neighboring agreements to respond to certain levels of fire. It's because every one of the towns, depending on the scale of the fire, need to depend on adjacent towns. Completely understood. But when you're dealing with something that is of a scale that requires certain equipment that no neighboring town has and we're trying to import it from Westport, that's a big, bigger problem.
And it could be fighting enough fire in Westport, not available.
Could be.
That's a good point.
So I hear what you guys are saying and just to play the devil's advocate for a second. Number one, I think my guess, I mean, who the heck knows, but I guess any decision we make will be appealed by the applicant. So I'm not necessarily looking to make a decision either way that the applicant is going to jump up and down and be happy with. Like, I don't think that's a probable outcome for us here. Um, so then that kind of changes what, what we're attempting, right? And knowing that this is going to go to court. You know, what's, what's the best case we can set ourselves up for? I think it's something that we should consider. And I guess one of the things that I just want to throw out there is, and I'm, I, I could go either way on this, but could a density reduction mitigate the concerns? Cause that's the part I get stuck on. I mean, one of the things Pete has said we have to show in a denial is that there's no way to build a, an affordable housing project here without that you, that you can't mitigate the concerns. And I think if this was a smaller project, you might be able to mitigate the concerns. I don't know for sure. And you know, how we come up with a number, I have no idea about that either. But um, just some food for thought.
Well, how small to mitigate the sewage concern?
Pete, this is actually a question for you, like, seems to me the sewage concern is going to be determined at a different venue, meaning court and not here and not a court case necessarily relating to the eight thirty G process, but relating to the WPC. Is that something we should be considering?
Well, no, it's a factor, but if you decided, if you decided to deny the application, you certainly can reference that as a reason. But if you wanted to approve it with be conditioned on um adequate connection to the sewer system. So um, that, you know, that, that's under appeal. Right now, the, the WPCA's denial of the extension is, is under appeal. So we don't know necessarily where that's going to go. But, you know, a, as you know, reviewed that under eight dash twenty-four. Um, you came to a similar conclusion as the WPCA did, and that is that the applicant specifically stated that they don't need the extension. And it, you know, it's not necessary. It's, it's, it was a, a, I think their engineer said it was a good engineering idea. But it wasn't required because of their access to the easement. So I, I don't know how that's going to play out, but at any rate, I mean, you know, you would, you would, if you wanted to approve with conditions, that would be one of the conditions. That adequate, you know, that, that sewer issue is resolved.
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how we could structure a condition if we, if we were inclined to approve with conditions. How we would structure a condition that would ameliorate the traffic congestion at that intersection of Elm and Weed. I mean, a reduction in size, obviously if there are fewer units, then presumably there are fewer cars that would be on the property. But a ten percent reduction, I don't think makes much difference. Twenty-five percent reduction, I'm not sure even that. Still a lot of cars that are going to be going one direction onto Weed Street.
I don't think it's going to make a difference whether if, if, if the conditions, um, approval with conditions is, is to meaningfully decrease the density since it's been so um adamantly expressed that that is a non-starter. I don't think it really makes a difference. Either way, we're splitting hairs between an approval with conditions where the condition is to meaningfully, meaningfully decrease the density, the size of the, of the building versus an outright denial. It's, it's, you're coming, you're going to come to the same conclusion very quickly.
Okay, um, so what I think I'm hearing is a sense of the commission is an outright denial. Yes, one person who's made the argument with conditions is Commissioner Nielsen. Do I have any other commissioner? Okay. Lynn, any input, questions? Thoughts?
I think you've sort of hit on all the points I've uh pointed out, but um just I guess you're not even going, um, I guess. You, you guys mentioned the height at, at points and um perhaps the thought of uh um, and the, and the density of the project, perhaps the thought of asking the applicant to bury the parking would reduce the height potentially.
I did ask the applicant to do that and the applicant said no.
Right.
Yep.
Not sorry to cut you off. Any other thoughts, Lynn? Any other thoughts?
I think you guys have already hit on all the thoughts I um had on the table. And the other thing, and I think you guys might have mentioned this, but the, the, the applicant never addressed the concerns related to um trucks, large trucks and small trucks, both delivering and um, moving around, moving throughout the site. So that was, that was another point.
Okay. I'll let, I'll let Attorney Gelderman jump in too, but um so what do we do next? I think what we do next is, and, and I'm going to ask Lynn and, and Pete to comment on this. I, I think what we do next is we've given um Pete and Lynn our thoughts on where we want to go. So you're able to start work and Pete in your case on a, on a draft denial. And I'll finish and then I'm going to have you chat. And then we are going to have to, you know, formulate using the record. Um, the reasons for denial get more factual. Um, the reasons for denial get more factual. I mean, I I know we've been, I'm not, I know we've been factual, but actually pull the record, you know, what do we cite in the record specifics, things like that. Um, so on that, um, Lynn, of course, you know, you'll do a good deal of work on that. And so have we given. I'll go first to you, Lynn, and then I'll go to Pete. Have we given you enough guidance for where we want to go?
So I guess we're going in the direction of where he went with the library that you'd like to see a draft set of resolutions um that. The commission could sort of opine on and um sort of edit and um, you know, um. Add their own specific specificity and their own thoughts to add detail to that. Is that is that where you're going?
Well, what what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that maybe Pete, you jump in. What I'm saying is we we have to now go back to the record. And um, you know. Substantiate. Our conclusions with the facts in the record.
That that that's true. Um. The. If if. Because when you're, whatever the reasons are for denial, you know, need to be obviously. Supported by that substantial evidence, and so it needs to be cited. And you know, in each case. It there needs to be a statement of what that substantial interest is that it outweighs the need for affordable housing, and there's no. Ability to to modify the plan to fix that. So in each reason for denial. Um, that needs to be there in the substantial evidence to the extent in a resolution you can reference. What that substantial evidence is.
In the resolution.
In the resolution, it makes the resolution stronger. Um, so what I would suggest is, I I don't know what the plan is for future meetings. Um, but but certainly individual. Commissioners can go through the record and and send to Lynn um what they think, you know. Is in the record that supports whatever reason they want to cite. Um, and, you know, gives Lynn as much information as possible. She can communicate with me and we can. Come up with a draft resolution that would then be presented to the commission maybe at the next meeting. To review and either approve, not approve, add, subtract. Now, it's it's a it's a significant. It strikes me that most of you are are more prepared and than most planning and zoning commissioners that. I deal with in terms of knowing what's in the record, but going back and reviewing the record between. And having given us those, you know, your thoughts between now and the next meeting, i- you know, is a little. Daunting, maybe, but um but most of you seem to have. Pretty good knowledge of what's in the record and and where you're going with this stuff already. So but that would be that. I would think the process would be to uh to do that and remember. The the reasons may be the same for all three applications, the site plan, the. Um, but we do have to, you know, they may not be identical. Um, so think about that as you're coming up with with whatever reasons. That you might have um and justification and evidence, basically, evidence.
Yes. Could I could I touch on one other issue um specific to safety? And I'd have to go back to the record or ask Lynn's assistants on this, but the town engineer. Did she ever weigh in on the capacity of the water supply? Because that's town water on that road. Did she ever weigh in on the capacity of the town water system at that? Intersection or at that site relative to the demand that would be needed? To provide a fire sprinkler system to a building of this size? Because when you're dealing with a a. You know, a a water infrastructure, that's, let's call it limited, right? We're dealing with a very. Suburban residential piping and sizing, volume, flow and pressure. And we're at the tail end of the line there. The city water doesn't really go beyond Weed Street further north or south, right? It's all wells. Is there enough, and she may have addressed this, I don't recall us touching on it, but she may have addressed it. Is there enough? Volume, flow and capacity and pressure in the system? To meet the demand of a building of this size in a fire sprinkler scenario? I know that the applicant has said will satisfy NFPA thirteen or thirteen R, whatever it was. That's fine. That's an easy thing to say. But if the infrastructure is not there to support it, they're not gonna be able to meet it.
I don't remember it ever being put into the record is our challenge.
I think there was a letter from Aquarian, like a well-served letter, but I don't I don't know that the town engineer opined on it.
Usually the uh. Fire marshal or maybe our or Andy Kingsbury would review that for adequacy. Usually that question usually comes through. A fire expert, because that's when. The issue becomes an issue is it's not, it's not taking a shower, it's having fire protections.
Right.
Um, and I don't know that I don't know if if anybody opined on that during the hearing.
Yeah, well, we talked about fire sprinkler extensively. I don't think we touched on that specific topic.
Okay, so commissioners um. You know, per per Pete, per Lynn, um, if everyone over. I want to talk about timing, but that'll be my next question, but. Everybody can focus on substantiating the arguments that matter to you and looking at the record and then Lynn. I think you and your staff, um, the good news is as our new staff member joined, Lynn. One day. So now he has a project. By the way, I also told Lenny also has to get going on the P O C D R F P. That's another project, so is is things, but but seriously, I I think. You know, Lynn, if you and staff can start working on it as well. Um, and so, you know, it's it's both the commissioners and staff. Um, and then the next question is timing. Um, and and I'll throw the question back to Lynn and Pete. I mean, let's say you're getting. I mean, what's today? I know a lot of the commissioners here will do some work during the week, but they'll also, like me, usually it's the weekend. Um, so let's say you start getting an information. I mean, you're able to start working. You've got the new person starting Monday. I mean, so but we still got a period we need for data collection. Um. Our and our next meeting is um week and a half.
We have a next regularly scheduled meeting for the twentieth.
Yeah. I mean, Pete, do you think it's feasible? So what's to? Yeah, it's not feasible. Yeah. So maybe what?
I mean, I. If everybody on the commission. Got us the information in the next week, yes, it's feasible. But I think that's putting an awful.
Yeah.
Heavy burden on the commission.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's see. I guess what we have to do is we just have to see how it goes.
We have until when, Lynn?
December first.
From the public hearing on September twenty seventh would bring us to December first.
Yeah. Pete, anything else from your end?
No.
Okay, Lynn, anything else from your end? Commissioners? Okay, um, this discussion's closed. I did have a couple more things I wanted to cover real quick. Um, Pete, thank you. Get home safe. Um. So I've been grappling. One, well, one comment I did want to make, I've said this before, but you know, just a plea to everybody is, I know everybody may not be. Checking their town emails as frequently as you check other emails, which I completely understand, but please keep an eye on them because. Particularly with all of this applications and eight twenty fours and everything, it's, you know, it it is tough for us to get everybody lined up. And if we're trying to put together a meeting and we're not getting feedback for one from one or two people, that's a problem. So, you know, I just kindly ask everybody to keep an eye on their emails and, you know, just keep us in the loop when we're asking about availability and things like that. Um, second thing I wanted to talk about is is you've been hearing that uh will probably. Um, for the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth, we'll be getting an eight twenty four. Um, having to do with a potential cell tower um on the West School property. And.
Saw that.
Here's here's what I want to ask you commissioners for your thoughts on. Um, what we're going to hear, I believe, is is we have in our uh cell regulations, which we did a couple of years ago. We have criteria where um if the town wants to install on public land a cell tower. Um, they have to obtain a special permit from the commission. Um, we are going to be hearing from Attorney Bloom pretty soon that that is incorrect. Um, that. And I don't want to go into the legals Attorney Bloom because I'm not the lawyer on this, but I've been in a fair amount of discussions on this and. We're going to get a memo fairly soon telling us that we after all do not have special permit authority.
For town property?
Correct.
What authority, if any, do we have?
We have a a thought, well, we're going to get an eight twenty four. Which has to do with a proposed lease for the cell tower. So the way the progression would work is it would come to us as an eight twenty four. Which, as you know, is a consistent or not consistent with the plan of conservation and development. It would then go to town council. Town council then has to approve the lease. And then I think it goes, like, correct me if I'm wrong, I think then it goes back to the board of selectmen. Okay, so. Let's say this is indeed the fact, okay? Um. Our bite at the apple then becomes the eight twenty four. Now, one of the things that I'm asking myself is what will be the wording of the eight twenty four? You know, is it a cell tower at West School or is it a specific location? You know, that then hence the site visit we're talking about. You know, there is a preferred site. And the site visit that Lynn's trying to put together, I have seen the site. And that she's trying to put together a site visit. Um, so our bite at the apples, the eight twenty four.
Would. Can I just add to that commentary about like where whether it's on the property or where it is specifically? You know, one of the other considerations I was thinking about is, you know, the. The look and the feel, the height, you know, whether it has a single vendor on it or multiple vendors. I I was reading some articles about. You know, obviously, the the cost benefit varies depending on the type of the lease. So do we opine on those different elements or?
See, that that's a great point because it depends upon the wording of the eight twenty four. So my answer to you, Chris, is I'm not sure.
They would probably.
Because I haven't seen, I haven't seen the eight twenty four referral yet.
Okay.
They'll probably take the option to have three or four carriers.
Oh, well, they'll definitely go to multiple carriage. Yeah, yeah. But but to your point, I mean, part of your question is, okay, what are we going to opine on?
Right.
And I have to see what the wording to the eight twenty four is. I don't I don't have an answer for you.
Yeah, so where where does that put us with the cell tower regulations that we issued four years ago?
Where it puts us is um, we don't have a heck of a lot of, we don't have the authority we thought we had.
According to Bloom.
Correct.
I'd love to understand why.
Right. And what I've told Attorney Bloom is that we will have him once his memo's issued. Potentially on the evening of the eight twenty four, we'll have him address us. Okay.
So the.
I'm not, I'm not making the argument one way or another.
So the cell tower um. Language we have is simply for anything that goes between the setting council is purely advisory. Because ultimately they are the decision maker. We're not the decision maker of a sound town property. Doesn't apply either. It's simply consistency with plan of conservation development. That's it.
As envisioned.
Is where this seems to be going. Exactly.
Okay, got it. So that's the status. Now here's my question. My question for you is typically with eight twenty fours, we do not take public input. Um. Some people feel that for this, we should take public input. Now, as I think about it. Now, I have to say I have a little bit of bias because I'm worn down after all these damn meetings. Um. But on one hand, you can say, okay, let's take public, we'll be the first stop in the process, the way it's currently envisioned. So we could say, look, we'll take public input. And we'll 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 essentially, you know, that'll help us make a decision. But. Like I said, with eight twenty fours, typically we don't take public input. So I don't think we necessarily have to take public input. So then the question is, why not take public input? Despite my complaining, you know, put that over here. Um, the 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 other reason is because when it goes front in front of town council. That will be a public forum. So my question for you guys can, you know, give a view now or, you know, think about it. Is, you know, should we just ti- handle it like any eight twenty four? Or or do you want to take public input?
And ultimately, the town council will approve or disapprove or deny the project?
The uh the lease.
The lease.
Getting technical, the lease, yeah. But the the my point is on the whole public input point is town council will take public input no matter what.
Yes. Well, I think the thing that kind of. I'm I'm getting a little bit of um like deja vu on is that when we did the library, we had that. Back and forth where, you know, the. The board of selectmen or the town council basically said it's up to the P and Z. It's all on their shoulders. But we think it's a good idea, which wasn't all that constructive because we kind of had this, we were between a rock and a hard place. So it's nice not to be the last one to make this.
Well, we're definitely not gonna be the last one for us. My question is.
I also don't want to be like the scapegoat where it's like, oh, we're just approving a lease. The P and Z is the bad guy, you know, like, I I feel like.
I I I think.
Being colloquial, you know.
There might be some things that are specific to this located to this application. That are kind of differentiated from a typical eight dash twenty four. One is the proximity to a school. I think the last thing I read in the record was something like a thousand feet from West School. So to have people. Whether they be administrators, teachers, you know, neighbors, um. You know, just parents that are sending their school to west to potentially. You know, give us feedback that might help us decide whether or not um based upon their unique experiences. There is consistency with the P O C D. Um, I could see public input being helpful in that regard.
I agree with James that there's gonna be considerable interest from the parents of the kids that go to the West School. Yes, where where it is and that whole thing. So. I think to give those parents an opportunity to express their concerns is probably a. A useful move.
But if if uh if we deny.
Happened with town council too.
Yeah, if 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 we deny, town council can overturn that, right? I mean.
I think it's a two thirds vote, Lynn.
Yeah.
So. You know, what what we're doing is we're just allowing another session for the public to express their feelings about.
If we take public, I'm sorry.
I was just, um, I'm just thinking about all the other other things that we're involved with right now and. You know, time is um. Getting getting very precious.
And and a two thirds majority isn't that much. So if we deny it, they're probably gonna approve it anyway. So like, we could. Wash our hands of it, deny it and let them approve it. Being very cynical.
With the town council.
Yeah, it's about, it could happen.
Sure. I mean, I'm I'm just saying there are possibilities to throw it.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, well, why don't everybody think about it? I'm I'm hearing two views. I mean, the the I I wanted to accomplish two things tonight. One was to just let you know what's going on and encourage you to do the site visit. The site visit I actually found very, very interesting. So I'm not gonna opine any further than that, but I would encourage everyone to do the site visit.
We still don't know which day or time, right? Yeah.
Okay, and then think more about public input, not public input. Um.
I think my thought on the public input is. I think we sort of have a responsibility to the public and to the town to allow that that forum here in front of us, even if. Even though it might happen in front of town council as well. There's sort of an expectation. Amongst townspeople when an issue like this comes up, which it has come up in the past here in this forum in front of this commission. They've had the opportunity to opine on it and whether we voted for or against it, whatever it was. I think if we now. For whatever reason, change that format and not allow public input, I don't think it's gonna be. No, don't allow public. Don't allow public input here, I don't think it's going to be looked on very favorably by townspeople.
I would, I would agree that, I like the idea of giving public input, but also defining the role of our commission vis a vis the role of.
Yes, absolutely.
So I just, I would want.
The vis a vis the role of town council.
Sorry, sorry.
Town council, yeah, it's all three, actually.
Yeah, yeah, so I just would want to make sure that people aren't thinking that we're the last stop necessarily, and so.
You know, it'll be crystal clear, we're the first stop.
Yeah.
And and like I said, I mean, it's, it's it's got, a lot of it's going to be driven by how the eight twenty fours phrase, and now that's sad. Also. Say, we do have the ability. To. Put conditions on it to an eight twenty four, right, Lynn? No, on an eight twenty four referral.
Cut it out. I think more likely you can recommend conditions on the lease that get added to the lease.
Okay, well, let's, let's, yeah, let's figure that, you know, let's work on that, that's a good question. Okay, so the last point of all that then is, so we are tentatively looking at both the twenty fourth and the twenty fifth. So the twenty fifth will be the regular meeting, and one of the things that I did was I just did backup pencil, assuming no public input on the eight twenty four. And I said, do we stuff it all into the Tuesday night? You know, who knows, you know, it's one of these, but I came up with six and a half hours. If we do take public input on the eight twenty four, then there's no way in, you know, you know where we can do it all in one night.
Right.
Right, so.
So it's intended that the eight twenty four would be presented in time for the meeting on the twenty fourth or fifth.
Yeah.
Regular meeting.
Well, what we're thinking about doing, Lynn, is maybe we do the. Eight twenty four on the twenty fourth.
Correct.
Because part of the challenge that Lynn always has. Is there are certain things we can put into a special meeting pretty quickly and there are certain things we can't.
Are you going to want to wrap up seven fifty one on the twenty fourth or is that the twenty fifth?
That'll be the twenty fifth, but that won't be a wrap up, I don't think we'll wrap it up. Because remember, we just had the discussion where twenty fifth is already ten days from now.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have a resolution.
Right.
But what we, I don't think we'll have a draft either.
Right, but what we do have on the twenty fifth is, you know, I, we, we should be able to wrap up Burtis pretty quickly, but Lynn and I were kicking around, maybe we put that on the twenty fourth along with the eight twenty four. But then if the eight twenty four includes the public, you know, that changes. Everything. We have a couple of, you know, the usual standard random applications, which, you know, have the time, take up more time than you would think. We have the new Canaan Lab Library Regulation Amendment, so that'll be a significant amount of time. Fifty one Maine, Lynn and I wanted them to come tonight. Just to make life a little bit easier and they refused.
It's too much.
They weren't ready, they said.
Too much for one night agenda?
So that's what we got going on.
Okay.
You want to go past midnight?
Is there anything on on legislation?
Well, no, well, that's why I gone with two nights. We don't have the lights turned out, honestly.
That's right.
Remember that, yeah.
We don't have any legislation activity, right, like, you know, no, no. Amendments that we're working on, none of that sort of backlog in terms of subcommittees and stuff.
Not right now, I think we've been basically co-opted by the eight thirty Gs.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to clear, make sure I wasn't missing anything.
What about the Affordable Housing Committee?
So.
The reason I ask is. The suggestion I had regarding. A infrastructure tax.
Yeah.
That we had talked about.
Yeah.
And how to. Start that discussion and on on the Affordable Housing Committee as a townwide. Change.
Right, so where that stands right now is about a month ago, I wrote a memo to the first selectman. Which should have been shared with all you guys, in which I outlined what a Affordable Housing Committee would look like. And it's, I, hopefully, it's in line with what we've talked about, which it would be separate from the commission. Members of the committee would include, you know, P and Z, obviously, the housing, the housing authority. First selectman is a hundred and ten percent in support of that. First selectman's view was you don't get the housing, the Affordable Housing Committee up and going until we get through at least this eight thirty J, although now we have a third one, so who knows on how long that. Drags on for, and then this past week, Steve Carl is Chair of the Town Council, which Lynn. Hopefully that was forwarded to the commissioners.
No.
I didn't forward, oh, I only forwarded to Scott, I'm sorry. So I'll, I'll remind me, did you see that memo? From Steve Carl to. Okay, like, I'll, I'll get that to you, remind me. So a week ago, on on behalf of the town council, Steve Carl wrote a memo to Kevin. Giving their views of how they would like it to look. You know, I'll get you the memo, the focus of the memo was, we want a broader commission, sort of James, you know, sort of in line with your arguments. And. You know, more, you know, more public forums, more public input.
For the Affordable Housing Commission or for?
For the commission. So I'll get you that email and that's where we stand right now. So there is going to be Affordable Housing Committee.
Yeah, I just, I disagree with Kevin that we should wait until this stuff blows over, because this stuff is not blowing.
Take forever, yeah, right.
It'll be one after another.
Yeah.
And we need to get in front of it.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, we're going to get a moratorium sooner than later. Like I would, but but I don't disagree, I don't disagree, so. Okay, guys, everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, was I clear as mud?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Dan, appreciate that.